Is. Six thirty, so I will call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for July twenty one, two thousand twenty-two to order. Um, just a couple of quick public service announcements. We have a very big agenda tonight, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we flow through the business of the board this evening. Just a reminder that these meetings are of the board are open to the public. However, they are not town meetings. They're meetings of the board to conduct business, and the public is welcome to make public comment on any agenda items during the public comment item on the agenda. So for our first order of business, I'd like to add a couple of items. When you're ready, Joyce. Make a motion to add CDL job description update to the agenda as new item seven point four.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'd like to make a motion to add discussion regarding town meeting process for school resource officer funding to as new item eight point one five.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
One more motion to add notification of exempt modification application to the Connecticut Signing Council for modifications to an existing tower on Bulls Bridge Road as new item eight point one six.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Fantastic. Rufus, you have a motion?
Uh, to add to correspondence four point five, letter from Charlotte Lindsay regarding the crossing on Maple Street, the train crossing. Train tracks.
A second. All those in favor?
I.
Hi. Any other items to add? Fantastic. Next is approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the June sixteenth, regular June twenty-second special and July thirteen special meeting minutes.
Second.
Thanks. Any edits or um clarifications at this time? All right. All those in favor?
I.
Hi. Thank you. And we're at public comment, so I'm gonna scan the room, Joyce, if you can help me. Scan the room if anybody wants to put their um digital hand up or put their actual hand up and wave around, get our attention. We'll be happy to take some public comment. Far I don't see anybody. Not seeing anybody. Alrighty. So we will continue to move along. Um, so we're gonna move to number four correspondence. And is Donna on the call yet, Joyce?
She is not.
Okay, so she asked through on Joyce if we can um bear with her as she's in a conflicting meeting um so that she can be part of the discussion about the email that she sent under four point one. So we'll keep that on the docket. Uh, next is um June twenty-seventh email from Victor Lee regarding a grievance. Um, if everybody can remember to um stay on mute, if you possibly could, so we don't get feedback. And this um sort of joins up with four point four, an email from Doug Nguyen, Kent Rooster Ownership Policy, and I know that um Donna has been working with, I believe, Mr. Nguyen on this for a number of months, so I'd also like to wait until Donna gets into the meeting to discuss these, if that's okay? Is that all right?
Sure.
Um, and then another email from Chris Harrington um regarding speeding cars that is in your folder. I had a meeting. Um. Somebody's got a lot of feedback going on. Just remember to please go on mute if um unless you're providing comment. So I had a meeting with Tru- Trupel Leadership yesterday with the CEOs from Warren and Washington initially to talk about speeding and pedestrian safety around like more wormog that we've been working on for a bunch of months now. But we um also got into a discussion about um town speed enforcement in all of our towns, and they agreed that um and and have some strategies that they're gonna put into effect to increase speed enforcement to activities um around town in the coming weeks, so um there will be um additional speed enforcement um resources that are gonna be put um into all of our towns um over the summer to address some of, try to address more of the um speeding issues.
I would um, I'd like to uh confer with Chris Harrington, by the way. Um, I was helping. Uh, I was helping uh at the concert series um at the Land Trust uh last Thursday. I was helping people park and uh noticing, noticing, really knowing how fast people were going south on Route Seven out of town. Um, it was it was rather eye-opening. Uh, that wasn't the first time I've I've done that for the concert series, but uh but I could um. I counted seven or eight times where people were uh passing people legally. I mean, they were passing people where they should, but they were going way too fast out of town and um and just standing on the side of the road was was rather frightening, actually. So um, so I'm going to just say that uh we're going to have to try to do better on Route Seven.
So we'll hold on that four point four and four point five um letter from Charlotte Lindsay. I also did receive a correspondence from her own a bunch of months ago.
Yeah, she included a letter that she'd sent to you. Basically, um what she wanted us to pay attention to or to even drive over the a little bump where the railroad tracks across Maple Street and notice that um uh there's quite a dip, and she was hoping that we contact the who's town or company, write a letter asking for them to come out and look at that crossing and see if they could improve it. Um. She said she's worried about the suspension of her car as she goes up and down to to her house up there on Maple Street. So that that's the gist of it, but um uh I can bring in the copies.
Sure, that would be great, so we can have them for the file. Yeah, I've um made a number of attempts to get in touch with the folks up at the railroad, and I think um we're because we have issues on the the Route Seven crossing arms. Um, so I think we're at the point where we're gonna send them a certified letter and um CC our legislators, so um we can see if we can get some traction on this.
Right.
Good.
Thank you.
Sure. I believe we have no tax refunds this evening. Is that correct, Joyce?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that Barbara is um still hip-deep in end of year, and um I don't think we have a treasures report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll um just hold on that. And so now we'll move into new business under seven point one, which is High Watch Recovery Center Incorporated, V Town of Kent uh docket number HHB dash CV two-two dash six oh seven two nine two-six dash S pending in New Britain Superior Court, and we're going to enter into executive session on this. I see Attorney Tower is here. Um, attorney, um just so I get the motion correct, um will be having yourself um town assessor Jen Dubray also um join the executive session, correct? Okay, so I will make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion discussing strategy with respect to pending litigation, High Watch Recovery Center Incorporated, V Town of Kent docket number as above, and include attorney John Tower and Assessor Jen Dubray in the executive session. I mean, just second for that.
Okay.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Hi.
So we'll wait a couple of seconds while Joyce pushes everybody to the waiting room. All right, everybody. Everybody pop back in at once, right? Making sure the deck chairs are reshuffled. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us while we had that conversation with the attorney. So we are going to move on. Let me just reconnoitre my screen here. Um. I'm just scanning. Did Donna, is Donna on yet? I don't see her, I don't think. No, I do see Mr. Nguyen. Hi, Doug. Um, we are um awaiting Donna Hayes to come into the meeting, so we're gonna hold the your correspondence from earlier in the meeting, so we'll come back to that once she's on the meeting. And catching up. Okay, seven point two, Kent Veterans Memorial Committee requests for the Board of Selectmen to take ownership of the veterans monuments. So we have a letter in our folder um from Andy Osef, and they are at a um a place where they would like to shift it back over or back to the town for basically care and custody. Um. Did you have a chance to take a look at that?
Yes.
Okay, so I spoke with Andy, and um he's gonna get the, there's a mention of criteria. He um is looking to have a subcommittee um appointed by the board so that they can um keep doing their investigation based on criteria that was set up originally for that um, the standalone committee. And so he's gonna get the criteria um from his group that they use, and I'd like to use that to set up a um uh basically like a standing subcommittee, but I need that first. I'd also like to get um, we're waiting for a quote from Karma on the additional insurance that uh we would need to get on the memorial um stones and the the whole memorial. So we'll um, we'll keep this on the agenda, and hopefully we can wrap it up at the next meeting, but any discussion, um obviously happy to.
I just have a quick question. Uh, so the Veterans Memorial Committee currently, they are part of the Historical Society?
They're subcommittee of, yeah.
Subcommittee. So 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 you're you're asking that there be a standing subcommittee through the town?
Yeah, we would appoint a subcommittee similar to the ARPA or Noise and Traffic or.
And then and then they would dissociate themselves from the Historical Society?
I don't know what they would do with the Historical Society. I'm assuming that the Historical Society would disband their, that committee.
Okay.
Um, and I I do wanna talk to the attorney about, is there um you know, when it comes to legal official ownership, is there anything that we need to walk through? Do we need an MOU? Do we? What what else do we need to do um legally for this to become the property of the town?
And and just looking at this letter, so so insurance carrier Karma um it it provides liability if someone is injured at the monuments, but it doesn't cover the monuments themselves.
Correct. So if somebody crashes their car into the monument and the monuments are destroyed, um or if someone defaces the monuments, that sort of thing.
Monument falls on someone, which hopefully that wouldn't happen, but uh, okay, so yeah, I was just trying to understand the the letter. Okay.
Little bit more.
I mean, we already have that. We must have coverage for the monument at the intersection.
Yes.
And the stone in front of the library.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
I can't imagine that it would be that much more to add the other ones, but.
I think that that would be, yeah, that'd be good to know.
And Andrea put in the chat um cost to the taxpayers, which is part of um, you know, what we need to get back to you all on. And Andy will have, you know, the their budget, what the cost is for the upkeep of the stones. If there's a, you know, when names get added, how much that costs, so we need to come back with some more information.
Uh, and la- last question, um, you know, so uh, so in October of two thousand eleven, so First Selectman Bruce Adams, he made a motion to remove this committee from the ties to the town. Is there any background on that somewhere? Is there any reason why that happened? I mean, I don't think it was mentioned here. I mean, it was mentioned in the in the the letter, but but not the reasons why.
You'd have to go back through the minutes probably of the BOS meeting during that time. Anybody um I'm gonna put it out, Darlene, I see on the call. Do you have any um history around that time?
I think Rick had his hand up.
Oh, thanks.
I believe it was just that they didn't have to report to the selectmen and bring every decision they wanted to make for the monuments back to the selectmen they got voted on. I think there's a letter in the file to affect.
Hmm, okay. Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
So we'll come back with um some more information on that. Uh, next number under seven point three, Low Vote Low, the Voltage Solutions LLC Proposal. Um, I'm just gonna shuffle the deck chairs. So we had um some vandalism at the Welcome Center month or so back. And um you know, it's concerning Andrew investigated um, and they were able to figure out who it was. It was a group of kids. Um. But it, you know, it it got me thinking that um if we, you know, we could use technology to protect, you know, there's a camera actually over at the Veterans Memorial um that we could use a couple of cameras to protect, you know, not only the the building at the Welcome Center, but also protect, you know, in the case of someone was injured or if someone was, you know, if there was a a crime there that two cameras could easily um just use technology to keep an eye on the building. So um John had done the work on um the Veterans Memorial, so I reached out to him and we did a quick site walk, and he gave us the proposal that you see before you. He did a little bit of research further today and um came back with maybe, I don't know, what, two hours ago, John?
Well, that, yeah.
It's really reduction for a slightly better um solution, so I'm gonna just hand off to John for a moment. John, thanks. This is John Meeker. He's up from or down from Warren, I guess, or you're probably in Warren right now.
Yes.
Um. So if you wanna just give a quick review of the um the cameras and um just what we talked about.
So because there's no internet at the uh the Welcome Center slash bathrooms, we proposed, you know, LTE with your cellular router to be able to put the cameras remotely from the town. Uh, along with that, there'd be a eight-port network, your recorder will give you some options to expand later on if you want to. The thing is, is there's a uh a called PTZ, which stands for pan tilt and zoom. That would be mounted on a telephone pole to be able to look at the front of the bathrooms where the bathroom doors are to be able to face. Benefit with a pan tilt zoom camera is the lens itself, it's far more uh zoomable, I guess, is the best way. You can telephoto in a lot closer to be able to get an actual facial recognition. Other benefit, the PTZ is let's say you're having a problem on uh Route Seven with the railroad, camera could be uh controlled remotely and be able to spin around and look at traffic, make sure that traffic's flowing or it's not flowing. If the rail, if the railway arms aren't going down, you're able to look at stuff as well from that location. On the back of the uh, back of the building, what I proposed was an eight-megapixel camera um with infrared for nighttime vision. Um. I re-proposed this afternoon, if, in my opinion, a better camera, it's a five-megapixel, a little less resolution, but it has a built-in floodlight, basically, so that um the whole time is there, the floodlight stays on, and it gives you a daytime-like picture. It's uh your color instead of being a nighttime black and white photo or video, rather. Um, along with that, it comes with uh inside the NVRs ten terabyte hard drives to be able to store all the data. Uh, one would be redundant, but it would be one terabyte or one ten, ten terabyte was a ten terabyte redundancy backup.
And John, that um, what happens with the data when it reaches, does it overwrite?
Correct. It does. It's automatic. First in, uh, first out. Ten terabytes, a lot of data. Um, oh. It it's gonna last you a while. Everything's gonna be set to a motion if you guys have to go that route um, so that there's no uh you know, it it's not gonna be constant, and we'll, there are zones, if there's, or whatever, we can block those out so they're not tripping the the motion.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, Glenn Rufus, um, just looking for questions. So there are a couple of questions came up of, um, you know, it's facing a bathroom, but John would make sure that it complies with regulations, complies with statutes for privacy. And they're located at the right height so that you're not, you know, there's no scope into any of the bathrooms or showers or anything like that.
It's all outside the bathroom.
Right.
One would be mounted on the back of the building, facing the showered border, so you can have an actual face coming out of the shower. If there's vandalism, you have uh an actual way to identify him. And the front one, like I said, it's gonna be mounted on a telephone pole on front of the building. It's not even under the building or under the awning. You'll be able to see people coming and going, but that's about it.
And do we need, um, forgive me if I've forgotten, do we need an MOU or is there authorization from whoever owns the pole, whether it's Frontier or EverSource?
Now, with that, um, there was a state statute that was created that gives municipalities one attachment on every telephone pole. Uh, basically, it's built for the broadband initiative, and you guys are allowed a, an attachment. In this case, it's, I don't believe it's gonna be a major issue. Uh, you already have a conduit between the building and the pole, so we'd use the existing conduit that's empty for running the wire between the building and the pole to power and uh you know, connect the camera to the system.
Okay.
So John, you installed the uh system at the Swift House, looking at the monument?
I did.
Okay, and that's, how long ago was that? Did you put that in there?
I wanna say it was a year and a half, maybe two years ago.
Okay, not too bad. And that and that's been working properly? That's been working uh well over there?
As to my knowledge, Andy's called me once for one one outage, and as it turned out, there was a leak in the box on the outside. It was covered under work. He was in the first year. Fixed it up, no problem. Um, the content with the Swift House is there's no internet there, so somebody has to go and check that on a regular basis to make sure it's working. I don't have access to it. Technically, any of the cameras I put in, I keep access to it so that I was monitoring them once a week. There's a camera out. Either I let you know or you let me know. We get squared away because you don't want cameras out.
Okay.
And um so if based on the previous um topic, would the um so if we were to, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason why the town wouldn't be um taking the veterans monument um back over, so that camera would actually now be the town's responsibility. And I'm, this is, I'm didn't think of this until we were just having a conversation, so I don't expect an answer, but um it, I'm sure it's possible to have that be on a similar system as these other two, so that there could be remote access.
Correct. It'd be about um an investment of, the equipment's about three hundred and fifty dollars. And then again, it would be the town providing a SIM card with whatever your cell provider is.
Right.
Or put in cable modem from whatever the company thinks charter down there and and have internet. One way or the other, you got to have internet access to the system to be online.
Right.
Um. Unfortunately, I don't think Frontier's internet is, would be robust enough to, at least not now. They're putting fiber into every town. Eventually, it's gonna happen, but probably not, not for a year or so.
Okay.
So cellular seems to be the easiest and the the quickest, but now it's you guys decide what what's better.
Makes sense to me.
Is there any yearly maintenance involved with any of this? Is it um pretty self-sustaining?
Pretty well self-sustaining. The only thing that I've seen is sometimes a lens will get um spider web on it. Um, and I mean, the highway department, if you guys wanna call me to come down, um, the other, the only issue I would do is, once a year, come down and do a check on the hard drive. Uh, you log into the system and and the hard drive to make sure that it's, it's, there's no bad sectors, you know, that sort of thing, so there's no missed opportunities.
Okay. And so you've done this type of system up in Warren, you had.
Yeah, we, we, I have um, uh the town Warren has four different systems with me through the, through different uh properties within, the highway department has a few cameras, the town hall has a few cameras. One of our, actually two of our parks, the the Town Beach and the Warren Woods have cameras in them also. If you need a reference, you know, it's called Greg with the, the um, um, all and talk to them. Yes, the cameras will work on motion.
Yeah. So do we have any other questions? Rufus or one?
I I I don't really have any other questions necessarily. I was, my mind was sort of going to Kent Commons and, you know, some of the other places where we've had vandalism in the past, and is this something that we would consider in other places?
Yeah. I think it you know, this is a
I mean, I'm happy to look at it for you, but that's between you guys.
Right, right.
There is a question in the chat about issues for motion with um spider webs?
I I we have some, but it's not a major issue.
Okay.
Really, the web is so close to the camera, doesn't, doesn't cause a, a motion.
Right.
Uh, John, I was curious on your second iteration of the quote.
Yes.
Said was a better camera, but on the first one, it does say that it's vandal resistant. Are they?
The second one is vandal resistant also. It's just um, it, the second one, I didn't put vandal resistant in, but it, it, because it has a light, um, it's vandal resistant. It actually acts, acts as a nightlight, so people actually see, oh, look, there's a camera with a light on it looking at me. So it's less, less opportunity. They they feel the company that I that I deal with feels that it's, it actually acts as a security blanket that way, that they're not gonna mess with it, because there's a light on hanging at them.
Right. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
As an added benefit, one more thing, um, there is, if if it interests you guys, there's an opportunity to um have it stored to the, stored to the cloud, which is a monthly fee with that, and it guarantees six months of storage, but you have storage in-house at the building. The only thing I dislike about that cloud storage, I think it's a good backup, but if internet goes out and it's not being recorded there, you're only recording it locally.
Right.
So, food for thought. I mean, it's about thirteen dollars a month per camera, if you wanna store it for the cloud. Um, when we said that either the highway department or you guys can pay me to come clean up.
Yeah. So, um, Rufus and Glenn, are we, um, we ready to make a motion? How would you like to, um, proceed?
I, I, you know, I, 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 I like the idea. You know, yes, there was vandalism, um, at the visitor center. Um, if, if we think that that might continue, if we think that that's a problem area, then that's something to consider. Um, I would like to say that, um, you know, having talked about the second trooper possible, possibly in town, uh, having been to the Board of Finance meeting last night, talking about the safety of the school. Um, if we're looking at surveillance somehow, is this the right use of money? Is this the right place? And maybe it is the right place. Um, uh, maybe, maybe the school, maybe something else. Uh, I, I'm just not sure. Uh, I, 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 like I said, I like this idea. But I'm just, I'm just not. I don't know. I'm just not, I'm not completely sold on, on, on the visitor center. And, and, and again, maybe it's the right thing, but considering other, other things that we've been talking about and will be talking about in this town. I'd like to think about that more. Hello Rufus, how do, how do you feel?
Well, I'm sort of, of, I, I, I think, John, I, I thought your presentation was for somebody who's not technologically inclined as much, uh, very clear to me. Um, I, I kind of agree with Glenn because I think that it's, it's pretty much new whole new issue of, of, you know, surveillance cameras, this side or the other thing, and, you know, do we want to evaluate the town, the downtown area, the, you know, Kent Commons or around the school, um, other places where we think vandalism or whatever might, might be prevalent and I don't know whether, whether that would change any, I, I doubt it, that you would, for each space, you'd be putting in very specific equipment and I'm, I'm thinking that this is probably excellent equipment, so. Um, I don't know enough about the equipment and, uh, but I, I don't know whether I wanna try to make a decision tonight. Now that I'm thinking about it, um, where I, I wanna, I, I kind of wanna think about.
I'm just here to answer questions. I'm not here to sway you one way or the other. If you guys have questions, I have, I wanna try and answer them best I can for you. I'm not, you know, I'll, I'll exit the meeting and let you guys do your thing and you can get back to me when she has a moment. Not, not.
Just for how long could you guarantee the quote?
Well, with prices changing the way they are, uh, it's, the quote, it says fifteen days, but I can talk to the manufacturer, make sure that we have a little leeway on that.
Okay.
Appreciate that, John, very much. And, and appreciate you coming tonight, um, to just answer all the questions that we have.
Oh, no worries. I mean, and, and if you have more questions, feel free to give a call. Happy to answer them for you guys.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Right.
Thanks, John.
Here.
You too.
So, yeah, and, and just to say this too, that, uh, you know, the visitor center gets way more, I think, uh, visitors, there's way more human traffic over there than I think at the memorial, at the memorial by the Swift House. Um, so on the one hand, yes, you know, this, this is, this is needed there, I think. But I'm not, I'm not completely sold, um, because I think there's other areas that we could look at as well. Um, and again, a, a, a lot of talk about the school and, um, it has been talk about, uh, you know, traffic and, and I know there was a, an email tonight about, uh, you know, I, I don't know if we can take, uh, uh, pictures of speeders, but you know, that's something to at least talk about. But, but because the, the, you know, we haven't, I don't think we've budgeted for this. Um, I don't, I'm not quite sure if we went out to bid for it either. But I do, I wanna, I wanna, and, and, you know, and the quote sounds reasonable and all, but, um, just wanna go, go through this the right, the right way.
That makes sense. And there's, um, Lynn has a number of questions that she put in the chat. Lynn, I didn't take your question, I didn't take your hand because we're just having a, an initial conversation and all the, the questions that you had will, um, they're saved in the chat, so we can flow those back to John and get answers on them to keep this conversation going. We have a very heavy agenda, so I wanna, I do wanna keep moving forward. So under seven point four, um, and
Donna is on the call now if you want to go back.
Yep, thanks. I just saw her. So thanks, Donna, for, um, being here. I'm gonna go back. We're gonna go back to,
Four point one.
Four point one. And, um, which is an email from Donna regarding food trucks. And, um, in her email, she said that she would like it read into the record, so I will read it into the record. Um, this is from Monday, June twentieth. Uh, Gene Rufus and Glenn, I would like this, uh, read into the record and discussed at the next regular Board of Selectment meeting. On Friday evening, I received an email from a resident that stated the Park and Rec Department hired a food truck, dot, 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 more like a food bus, dot, 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 to be at the baseball game tonight at KCS. Lots of people are there, dot, 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 feeding slash selling to the general public. End quote. On March third, twenty twenty-two, the following motion was made by Rufus upon the determination of the P and Z Commission at their January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The Board of Selectmen agree and move that commercial food trucks are not allowed in the town of Kent. Food trucks for the exclusive use on private property are allowed with the proper health department approvals. Gene Spack seconded the motion and seconded the motion carried. I would like to know how this was allowed and how I should explain it to those people who are still calling me about the use of food trucks within the town of Kent. So that was her, um, email. And, um, Donna, do you wanna, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, it's just, you know, I get phone calls from people. I actually had someone come in my office and said, oh, this is awesome. Food trucks are allowed in Kent now. And I was like, yeah, no. I said, not according to the resolution that was made by the Board of Selectmen, so, um, I just need a little bit of guidance on how you want me to answer this, or if you don't want me to answer it, and I'll just send it to you guys. I, I don't have a problem doing that either. But, you know, I mean, when my office is getting questioned and I don't know why it happened at one point and, and is it, did you change your mind? Um, so I'm just, I was just curious.
My understanding was that that food truck
and
Park and Rec paid them a flat fee, that there was no, they were just providing uh, you know, s- some, I, I don't know what was there. I didn't go to it, but we
Rufus, I don't, I don't wanna cut you off. I do wanna let, um, I wanted to have Jared be able to hop in so that we could, um, you know, it was his department. Um, I don't know if your commissioner, if your commission chair is on the meeting, but, um, I saw Jared, you turned on your camera. So if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Julie is here, not, at least that I can tell.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, this, so the, the, the food vendor was, um, paid for. We contracted with them basically, and, uh, we paid a flat fee for them to come and serve ice cream to the party. So, uh, no money was being collected from patrons. It was all basically a, it was a rec program and it was kind of our end of the year uh, celebration and, uh, it was on us, so to speak. Um, so no money should have been collected in any way. And, um, it was all handled in advance with, you know, they had the proper paperwork, your health department, et cetera. So, um, in setting it up, I didn't even see it or consider it being problematic because of that. And because I know that the same vendor's been used elsewhere in town, so, um, you know, if there's something that I did incorrectly, I'll be the first to admit to that. I just didn't think that, that, um, was incorrect, but then furthermore, you know, understanding what the spirit of the policy is, um, with respect to, I, I had assumed that it was having permanent food vendors operating out of uh, vehicles, not bringing someone in. Basically, it would have been no different if we contracted with someone to serve ice cream at the party and they set up a tent and sold, you know, gave it out out of the tent. The only advantage of the truck is it was refrigerated. It was eighty-five degrees outside. So, um, once again, like I said, if I messed up, I'm the first to own up to that. Um, but I was doing it what I thought was the proper spirit of the, uh, policy.
And Jared did come to me and we chatted about it. And it, it does meet this, the, the spirit of the, the motion that was passed, because it was not, you know, there was no commercialization. No one was purchasing food. It was, it met that four, sort of four-prong that we had been discussing for a year and a half now of local health and licensure approvals. It, it didn't meet one of them. It was not on private property. It was at the very, very end of the parking lot of, uh, Kent Center School. Um, but it was for invited guests. It was the, to, like Jared said, to thank the after-school program families who had endured a lot of, um, you know, just turmoil and stress over the past year and a half without a, um, Park and Rec Director. And, and nobody paid for the food. So it was, you know, the, there was nothing, there was no mal-intent. Um, Donna, I would say if you're getting calls from people, they should come up to my office. Um, since the, you know, P and Z, it's, it's not allowed through P and Z where we've created those sort of four-prong, that four-prong approach that, um, you can just forward them up to the office and we can address them from there. And can you, um, forward the email so I can follow up with the, the person that, um, sent you the email? So I can just have a conversation with them.
I'll ask him if he wants me to do that, but, um,
Well, it's public. It, it's all, it's all public, so if you can just forward me the email, that would be great.
I'll ask him. Um, you know, I mean, what I got was that, you know, it was not just ice cream. It was food. It was huge and people were buying it. So, you know, I mean, that's what I got. That's why I'm asking. I just want it out on the table. And in the future, I will send everybody up to you, Gene.
Great. And unfortunately, that person, um, didn't give you the right information at all. I did stop by on that Friday night. And there was no food.
Yeah, Donna, I can tell you, I'm not trying to pull it fast or anything. It was literally, uh, just an ice cream truck and uh, whether or not someone tipped the guy serving it, I can't tell you that, but, um, no money should have been exchanged. Uh, we were very clear with the contract we signed with him and everything, so.
And that's fine. I mean, I don't, it's, it's not like I care. I just want to make sure that I'm not giving someone incorrect information. And if I get someone who comes to me, I know where to direct them. So, um, in the future, I will direct them to, um, Selectmen's office.
Great.
Thanks.
And there's questions about, um, a taco truck. That's, I think we're going back two years now and we're just gonna move on.
Could, could I just say one quick thing? Um, so, so, so whether it's, you know, ice cream or hamburgers, or whether it was a flat fee, or whether people were paying, um, I, I, I mean, you know, so, so clearly there was, you know, this situation was somewhere in the middle.
No, it was not in the middle. Nobody, people, the public, it was not an open public event where everybody in the whole town wa- it was open. It was an invited, it was, it was targeted to the program families. Nobody was paying. Nobody paid. The Park and Rec Commission paid the vendor and everybody got free ice cream.
But what I'm saying is the motion on March third does not parse all of this. It, it doesn't explain
Sure.
anything you just said. I mean, I, I'll read it again.
You don't, no need to. I, I'm clear on it.
I think it's, I, I
But there was discussion also during the meeting and, and for a year and a half before that about the, the focus of the, the businesses that were, um, not happy about and aired their, their opinions about, um, the, the issue, what the issue was, was the commercialization that it's going to take away from. People are not going to go to Hinkle Hollow, um, Philly Cheese Steak, um, shop on Main Street in Kent. And they're going to go to the, the, um, the food truck that pulls up that's selling Philly cheese steaks. And that's, that was, that was what the, the core issue was for the, the businesses.
Yep. They were also very concerned with the fact that if a food truck were to come in and set up, it's not a brick and mortar and they're not paying taxes like they are.
Right.
So that's, that I think was, I think they can stand on their own as far as the quality of the food that, at the restaurant serve, but one of the things that was that was sticking in their craw was the fact that you're letting people come in here that are not paying taxes like the brick and mortar stores are.
If I can, and, and I don't want, mean to drag on the conversation anymore, but I'm obviously very new to this because I wasn't around when any of this stuff really came to form. But I think for Parks and Recreation, it's a very relevant discussion because if we run an event and we want to have food at the events, I mean, kind of at this point for Parks and Rec, the industry standard, if you will, is food trucks, uh, you know, most rec departments that are able to make heavy use of them at all of their events. Um, that food is being served at. And the reason for that is because many people who are mobile food vendors have moved to that setup in the first place. But secondly, it's really, um, it's a very popular thing, which I think most people at this point know, because many of you probably frequent them. Um, so I wonder kind of where, you know, with respect to the current policy, how does it apply to one-off events, et cetera? Um, is it only allowed if it's paid for in advance and then what they're giving out is free? And if that's the case, is there any wiggle room to that moving forward? Because I think especially as we reinvigorate Parks and Rec and we start to do larger, you know, more interesting and exciting events. Even the concert series, the discussion came up, how cool would it be if you were at the concert and you could hit a few food trucks? They're only there for that one night for two hours. But, um, you know, like I said, I'm new to this, but, you know, I thought it was relevant to kind of throw it out there and see where we stand and, and where possibly we're moving forward.
Th- those are good questions, Jared. I was about to ask that. So is this going to happen again?
Um, I honestly, my, every spring I would hope to bring back the Ice Cream Guy, because it was a real hit. It was reasonable and, um, it was really a perfect way to wrap up, uh, our, our, our year. So, um, but once again, it would be the same thing. It would be covered by rec anyway, but that's just a one thing. What if we wanna run an event, a festival of sorts, and we wanna have food? Are we only gonna let people bring food in or only people who bring a rig and will set up without being in a truck? I mean, it, to me, it's, it's a very, I think it's a deep discussion, probably one that it really doesn't need to happen right this minute. Um, like, you know, like Gene said, it's, it's a big agenda, but just something to think about.
Thanks.
Based on that motion in March, I would like to talk about something that might come up that might run up against our motion.
You wanna do that right now?
No.
Okay.
There's two questions in the chat.
I don't know anything about the taco trucks. Sorry, I can't respond to them.
Yeah, and that was, you know, something that happened two years ago. Um, it's, I'm, I don't wanna go and rehash something that happened two years ago. Donna, I'm gonna give you the floor for just a second if you wanna, I, I, you were obviously involved in that. Okay, so I, I would like to, we're gonna move on from there. And we're gonna go to Roosters.
I don't have anything to say about that either.
Well, um, so I know that, um, we have, um, I think Mr. Wen is still on the call and you had said, um, when we were back and forth in email, you had been, um, talking with the, um, one of the homeowners for quite a while. If you could just bring us up to Bring us up to speed. Um, is that anything that, I mean, it's clearly a P and Z matter. That's my understanding. Just looking for a little gap filler background.
Um, I got a complaint that about a rooster and roosters are allowed in the rural district. So that that's, I I don't know, I don't know what background information you're looking for.
Hi, this is Doug Nguyen. I'm I'm uh on camera.
Hi Doug, hang on one second.
Okay.
Um, I just, I didn't know, Donna, if you had, you had said that you'd been working with them for a few months and I didn't know if there was any more. Information. Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Okay, thanks for for waiting, Doug. Go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, uh, so my letter is. Uh, just wanting to start a conversation on. Uh, ownership, not of all livestock. Only roosters. Outside of the 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 Kent proper. It's my understanding and Donna Hayes was very, very clear in directing us to uh uh the. Places where we can get information and thank you for that, Donna. I appreciate that. Uh, but we're experiencing something uh maybe unusual. We've also been told and. And almost in a passive aggressive way that it's been over a decade. Since anyone has made a complaint about roosters, but. Um, and and that might be a fact, but um now in a COVID age where we're forced to work from home. This is something that's the uh it's become kind of a sensitive issue. Uh, we bought our property about four years ago. Um, and uh live on about four-ish, almost four acres uh of of property. Our neighbors live on just over two acres of of property, but we didn't think that. An unlimited amount of livestock would be allowed on such a small piece of property. And I grew up in farmland. I I grew up with hens and cows and horses and and pigs and. Uh, all the noises and feels and smells of 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 farmland. I also grew up with roosters, but we also lived about three football fields away from our nearest neighbor. The the proximity of our home, our dwelling, uh in relation to the rooster dwelling is incredibly close. Actually, probably closer than most, many, not most, of the homes in Kent proper downtown. Where cat or roosters are not allowed. We just want to. Start a conversation again to see if there is a a a a way to. Put more of a buffer, a cushion uh between a rooster dwelling and the neighboring dwelling. And that's all. Uh, we we are not trying to start any drama. We're just trying to do our work and now we're forced to work from home. We've done everything to put up trees and we'll probably have to put up more trees and. Put in a fountain and all all these things to try to cancel the noise. We bought electronics for inside the home. Um, which is incredibly expensive, but we were willing to do that and we're willing to work to 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 make that happen. But. There doesn't seem to be a a clear guidance on. On how many roosters uh can now maybe become our new neighbors and. And yeah, so that's just a, it's a, it's a little concerning, but we just want to start a conversation. And to see if there can be uh maybe some uh edits to the the policy language. That allows more distance and that's all.
Thanks. And I apologize, Mr. Lovero. I initially didn't see you on the um participant list. I saw you pop up in the chat. So I'm gonna um give you a two minutes to just come in, be part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just typed in uh a message that I have two and three-quarter acres of property. And the rooster pen is a hundred and three yards from Dove's house. Okay, I I encourage you guys to come out and measure. All right, now Doug and his partner have been a nuisance since I moved in and we both moved in around the same time.
So I'm gonna ask you to be cordial and um and. And professional when we're talking on the on a public meeting.
What did I say? Partner?
Nope, using the word, you said something about being a nuisance.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, they haven't been very nice. They started out pretty nice. We were friendly dinners, you know, talking, got to know each other. And then Rover came back to me that they called every opportunity. They called the town hall and complained about me and my girlfriend. They called, called for my son's tent. They called for the two uh. We have goats, two small goats. They called to see if I pulled permits. They called the neighbor to start a war between us. Because I was working close to her property and now they just called DOT on me. So they're not as nice as they seemed, put it that way.
So, um, Donna, I'm just gonna come back to the um P and Z piece of this. For um, what's, what is the pathway forward as far as? Just addressing Mr. Nguyen's concerns and what he wants to do as far as um. Not a ban on roosters by any stretch, but what are the, what are the options from a P and Z standpoint as far as? Updating, putting in a regulation change. Just so we can get a better understanding. I I don't see. The Board of Selectmen um taking any action on this, but I'm just, I'm looking for. You know, we have two, two, you know, families in town who are disagreeing about. Their, the livestock and just want to get your thoughts, Donna, on a path forward.
Well, I mean, number one is there is a right to farm ordinance. And if you look at the last paragraph, um it is. It is, they do have the right to come to you as a selectman um to mediate whatever is going on. With regard to planning and zoning, I can't issue a cease and desist. I can't issue a notice of violation. Uh, roosters are allowed in the rural district, not in the VR one or VR two. If they want to change the regulations, they would have to come in and fill out a form to um ask. The commission to change the regulation, which would be a change to ninety-eight percent of the town. Um, I don't know if the commission would agree to that. I don't know if there's any way to put in any, any way. Um, to actually regulate a hundred and fifty yards. How how do we know that? Um, you know, so it would have, it would, he has the right to come and try to change the regulations. Um, but I can't guarantee that the commission would do that.
Okay. So, um. What I'll do is I I'm gonna talk to town attorney and um I'll get in touch with both of the parties. And um follow up with um some discussion for mediation.
Thank you.
Well, Gene, Rufus, Glenn, Donna, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
And we are going to, I think we're all caught up now. So we're gonna pop back down to seven point four, which is the um CDL job description update. So Rick. I'm gonna. Just pop you into spotlight you so we can um. Just have a quick conversation about what you wanted to update the um, the job description. Did I get him?
I believe they only changed besides some grammar or something was the. Adding that they should live within twenty miles of this radius of Kent. And that's for call-ins and stuff.
Right, so in the winter, um when there's a storm, Rick needs to be able to call in the the team to. You know, start with the the plowing. So he wants, he just wants to add that one piece to the job description. And there's some grammatical errors and updates to the job description.
Oh, uh, just curious, why twenty? Is that like you're trying to get somebody here in half an hour? Well, they get. All of them get uh paid for a half hour before they start when they're called in.
Okay.
But I start calling at like five, ten after the hour before I want them there. And the further away they get, the earlier I need to get up and call those people, so.
Makes sense.
So, um, Glenn, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. So I will um. Make a motion to approve the updated CDL. Oh, my goodness. I just. Here it is, CDL maintainer. I'm sorry, highway seat, highway maintainer with CDL job description as submitted.
Second.
Apologize about that. Thank you. Anything further? Alrighty, all those in favor? I, thank you. On to, thanks, Rick. Second. Alrighty, um, on to old business. We um had a motion that we made a. A couple of months ago and I have just realized that in my notes, I did not. Um, while I rewrote the motions. I don't have a start date for um either one of these motions that we needed to correct. So we'll have to. Leave this unless Joyce, you have it, um, that you can access it remotely.
I don't have it with me.
Okay, so we'll have to come back to that. And moving on to. Sorry. Eight point three, I have no update and we have so many more conversations to go on to tonight. And I know that we have to start to attend to this, but um. I think we'll just move on and leave this on the the agenda.
Did um, uh, Gene, were you able to get any information from the cog? You said you were gonna get information from them about the salaries with the.
Oh, I apologize. I thought I sent that spreadsheet. I will get it out to everybody.
Yeah, if you could get that to us and and just to tell both of you that um I've I've been um looking at budgets. Um, in Kent, Cornwall, Goshen, Salisbury, Sharon, Sherman, Warren and Washington. I have an entire spreadsheet of of just salary, just salaries. Uh, you know, I know time and what people do in offices are 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 different. They differ from town to town, but published uh budgets. I would love to see what the cog has um has for information so I can cross-reference. Um, so um, so but I would like to talk about this uh at some point in the near future.
Yeah, for sure. Um, eight point four, Town Hall, uh larger meeting room video conference system update. Any, any? Any new updates, Joyce?
Uh, I checked with Ted. He has ordered the equipment and he's reached out to the electrician but hasn't heard back.
Okay, thanks. And I don't have an update. I just. And we've been super busy here at the office trying to get Streetscape going and a number of other things. So I have nothing for eight point five, eight point six. Hopefully at the next meeting, we'll be able to wrap that up. Um, the pandemic, this latest variant is um. As everybody knows, highly, highly contagious. We blew through, um, I want to say twenty, twenty-five. Um, home kits in three days. A week and a half ago, um, we had none. We um just took delivery of two cases. So we are um able to provide those to people. A lot of people. Um, had been coming in for kits. We've been going through, there's definitely an uptick of people taking masks home. You know, and leaning forward into the fall, we're looking at, you know, the other variants coming out of um. Africa coming, you know, into Europe. So we're, I think we're gonna, you know, continue to see this up and down. But other than that, that's, that's sort of where we are on COVID nineteen. The flag policy, I realized based on what we're going to do with the um. The monument, we should add that into the policy for um. Because it. Because that's gonna be ours. So I will um put that in and have it ready for the next meeting. Um, EV charging stations. So with both this and broadband and broadband, I'll get to later. There is the the money that we've been talking about that's flowing down from the federal government. Into the state has, there's so much shifting. We had, I had a meeting last Friday with a vendor. Um, who's a state bid ever source um vendor for. Putting in all of the infrastructure for these EV stations. We have another meeting on Friday um as a follow-up. So there's two sort of different buckets. There's this ever-source funding. But then there's a lot of deep funding and there's funding coming down from IIJA plus the federal highway. So getting these all to um align into one um sort of one package is. Little bit of a um Hydra, dealing with just a lot of different moving parts. So um definitely more to come. Rick, I know that you had a conversation. With a couple of people about the one here. At Town Hall. Is Rick still on? Yes.
Uh, resident was trying to use it. He called the company and I talked to him while he was on the phone with him. They sent me a estimate, but the estimate was only to repair the cord that didn't retract. It wasn't to. We vamped the system or anything with new circuit boards, so.
Right, and that unit is that um, what do they call it? I think it's called a phase one. Charger which deep isn't, um, there's the, their funding for the level, uh leveled one, I'm sorry, level two and level three. The fast chargers. So we wouldn't be able to get any funding to repair that one and it's so old that um. It's the um, there's like a rep for that vendor that I was in contact with a couple of months ago and um. He said that it's, it's not supported. It's too old, the technology. So more to come on that. It's, but there's just a lot of moving parts. Um, to that. The Betty update, I don't have an update there. Um, there is some focus on the um FQHC that it, they're opening up in North Canaan. I think it's next year. They're actually, there's, it's gonna be a building. Um, and I think that we might want to refocus our efforts. Instead of getting that in town, um refocus our efforts on transportation. Uh Samantha has a couple of leads on a little bit of funding. Um, I've been in discussions with the other, the Washington and Warren. And they're open to having a conversation to us being part of their um transportation. They have a bus that they have a share with. So I think there's better opportunities for us to get some better transportation. For people who need transportation to primary care. So I, I'm, I'm gonna, I think we should refocus our efforts on that. Um, eight point one one, uh, Swift House ADA checklist for existing facilities review. So we have that. Is that in the folder? I don't think it is, but you both have received that. So that was, um, John Worthington was kind enough to spend multiple hours with me on a Saturday. Um, walking through the building with a fine-tooth comb with that, I think it's a seventy-something page. Checklist that goes through based on that title two that we fall under. Um, going through every doorway, every um. Every doorknob, every counter, um bathroom, et cetera. And what you see in there as a result of that. So. Our um. Next step really is to make a decision on where we're gonna take this checklist. And you know, this is, this means finding someone to come up with a plan for. And you know, this is, this means finding someone to come up with a plan for. Compliance for those, for all the items on that. Checklist.
Jean, I never got that checklist.
It was sent to. Both of you. Glenn, you got it?
I did see a checklist, yes. I think it was emailed.
Yeah.
Yep. Let's see.
I can send it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, back on June sixteenth.
I believe it was in the last regular meeting shared folder as well.
That would make sense for the date that it was. But we can resend that out. So I. I think that I could probably. Have a conversation. I was I was told that Wes Wyrick years ago. Put together some pretty extensive information. On. Compliance for the Swift House, so and I don't know if. Anybody on the call, Donna or Rick, Donna, I see you just came on on screen. Do you have any background on that?
We have a couple of sets of plans in the folder.
Okay.
I don't know how, I I don't consider them to be. ADA driven because they were going to be doing some work on them, but they're open to the.
When?
When would anyone to come and see?
When were those from?
I think nineteen, someplace in the nineteen, late nineteen eighties, early maybe nineteen nineties.
Okay, so that might have corresponded with that grant that they got that the town had.
I don't know.
Okay. So I'll come down and review those and. We're gonna have to find funding for this. Just to to hire an architect to get us a plan. So we can look into grant funding. We have a lot of. Other projects on the docket this year. We have, there's just a lot going on. But Barbara can look into some grants, see if we can find some funding for this. But we need a number.
Good.
So I'll go look at the plans and follow up with Wes. And also loop back around with John Worthington. Just to see if he has any other recommendations. On to eight point twelve review and. Did I get that right? Am I in the right place? Sorry. Review and possible approval of the community resilience building workshop summary findings report. So I don't have anything on this. I think this actually shows up twice. Yeah. There were, the team is following up with, there was an error about a boat launch. And some spelling corrections, so we're going back to the nature conservancy. Because it was, again, their product. And we'll get them to to make the the fixes. And then. Bring it back to this body if you would like an approval on that. It's largely the. More than the second half is lifted right from the. Hazard mitigation report, and it was basically a wrap up of this. Workshop that the Kansas Kent Sustainability Team participated in, but it was a nature conservancy. Program and product. So eight point one three, status of Main Street noise and traffic report. So after a number of emails to the DOT, I did get a call back last week. And as I anticipated, the report spans for them multiple units. So their organization is broken up into lots and lots of different units. So this point person that I spoke to said that he's gonna. Take it back to his boss. They have to send it out to the units that it affects. Which will take them likely a month to just get back to us on how they would like to proceed. So that's that's the only update that I have.
Okay.
And it's a gigantic agency. I was expecting that. And we had a, I had some folks from the cog help with getting, finally getting to a human being, which was good. They only largely have the big sort of anonymous email addresses, so. We were able to get to a person, which was good.
Well, for noise and traffic, I'll say thank you for. Following up.
It's a work in progress.
Yes.
Eight point one, three point one, the crosswalk stop for pedestrian pylons. So if. From Rick and I had a couple of conversations. I looked at the report again. There's a couple of issues to work through. Rick, if you can just hop in here. One is, when do we want them to be out? Based on that, how will they get out? And then from there, we would need to go through the encroachment permits. And one thing, another thing that we need to consider is what's the condition of those older barrels that we pulled off? Probably almost two summers ago now, and. Should we consider and is there money in your budget to purchase ones? I recently was. Just doing a quick search and there's some that can withstand some traffic, you know, they're. A little bit lower profile. It's not that old style barrel, but it's sort of a T where the top is on a spring and it. You know, somebody ran it over with their car, it would not. Cause such a ruckus with the vehicle and, you know, getting dragged off by someone's car, so. I guess the first question is, when, what's the the temperature of the board of when you want them to be out? And there's a couple of different sort of schools of thought of having them out all the time. But then you get desensitized to them if they're out all the time. So just looking to start this discussion.
So what's what's been done in the past with these again? So so they were out on Fridays?
Ricky.
Every day.
Every day?
Every day we put them out on the weekends. We didn't, unless I paid somebody to come in and do it, they weren't out. And people started putting them out themselves and then they were put out in the wrong places and. They're getting run over and stuff like that, so I believe that's. Probably why the board voted to take them in. I think that was maybe two years ago.
Yeah, I think it was two summers ago.
I watched somebody who was probably thirty-five percent across the crosswalk. The other day and a car. Never stopped, just went right right by, right in front of them. So I think they should be out.
And there is, I think, some education that can go with this. There was a public act that was passed, I think, in this last session in twenty-two. About if a pedestrian. Makes motion, makes a motion with their hand, then that's. Sets into motion punitive resulting. I don't know if it's, it it has to do with the. They would.
Tell them that you want to cross, not that you're just standing there talking to somebody on the white line. I said, it's to tell people that you actually want to cross the road, that you're not just standing there looking around talking.
Right, having a chit chat after you had breakfast. Yeah. So there are some community options. We'd have to check with DOT because it's a state highway. But there in, there's a couple of towns, I think New Canaan, Darien uses a. In addition to the crosswalk pylon, they have flags that are put out at the beginning, at the end of the day. On each side, one side of the crosswalk, and so a pedestrian would take that flag and they would walk across, you know. So it's a little bit more of a visual reminder to drivers. And we have a lot of cars obviously parked. You know, if you're walking anytime on Main Street when there's, you know, on the weekends, there's so many cars. And if you're not paying attention. It's tough to see people, so those might help. Again, we need to talk to DOT to see if that's something that is allowed. But it would be a supplement.
I know noise and traffic, we were, we were concerned about the weekends primarily during the high season, so. You know, so so Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So, yeah, Rick and I did talk about to to, you know, we have union employees for the town crew. And in theory, they could put them out as sort of their last task of the day on Friday afternoon. Or they could, they could put them out Friday morning for that matter, so they could go out Friday morning as their first task. And then they could pick them up on Monday morning as their first task. And then we're not incurring, you know, any overtime. Because overtime is automatically, is it three hours, Rick?
Yes.
So it's saving, if they went out on a Friday night after their, you know, normal work hours. Then it would be automatic three hours to go put the. Crosswalk pylons up, so that would save save money there.
Okay.
So that's one concept, out Friday morning in Monday morning.
When I do the encroachment permit, I was gonna ask if they could stay out twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
If I do that. Do you wanna, we have three crosswalks on Main Street and one on Bridge Street. Do we want signs at all of them or you just want to do Main Street or?
I think for continuity, so that the expectation is if you're in Kent. You're, there's gonna be a pylon at the crosswalk as a visual reminder.
Close to it. The way they're situated, we can't put them, they like the sign to be in the crosswalk, but. Because attorney raises coming out of each place that they're near. Trucks and stuff can't do it without being set further away from the crosswalk.
Right.
So when you do the. Application to DOT and you go twenty-four hours at all the places, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have them there. All that time. But we're covered if we do, like if we forget to bring them in or. Right?
Well, I have a date. Limit on them too, because they can't be out if there's like snow plowing or stuff like that, because.
Right.
So. To spring through. I don't know, whether somewhere after Columbus Day or something like that. And then during the. If we put them out during the week, during the winter, or just. Pick them up if there's gonna be a storm or. That'd be up to you guys if you want them out that time of year also.
But we can't move on all this until we get the encroachment permit.
Well, I need the information that.
Right, this is gonna drive.
Permit that they know what.
By the permit, okay.
We're asking for.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I would think we'd ask for. I mean. If we get permission to use it. We don't necessarily have to use it. That's all I'm saying. So, I mean, you know, we go as far into the fall as possible. And. As early in the spring as possible.
Yeah, I do think as things ramp up, so two, two sort of salient. Things to consider. One, we're gonna have, in theory, beautiful new sidewalks that are going to attract a lot more people to our town. And the library, the, you know, the organizations around town, I think are gonna this, this season, this. Fall season, winter season, we're gonna see more activities for people to attend. In town, hopefully the champagne stroll, you know, those post, the, you know, winter time, Christmas time, holiday time. Activities, so I I think it's probably smart for us to ask for all year round. And there's nothing to say that we. If we need it, I mean, obviously we have to pull them in compliance with regulations and statutes.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm going to. Allow for Andrea to, she's got her hand up. She's on the noise and traffic committee. And give you a minute if you wanted to add anything else.
Thank you, Jean. I just have a question and I guess along the same line of thought as Rufus saying, you know, if we ask for it, you know. And part of our Main Street Noise and Traffic Committee was saying like, let's ask for it all. And if they say no, they say no, like. So my question then is when Rick writes this. Request. If we ask for a lot and they say no, are they saying no to everything? If we say we want it for the entire year, they say. No, you can't have it at all, or do they say, no, you can only have it during your high season? Like what are sort of the levels or tiers that we say are are priorities? And does he have to keep going back and saying, okay, if you're not gonna give us for the whole year, how do we get it for March through December? And they say that's too long, then we say, okay, how do we get it from May to the pumpkin run? You know, like what? I'm just trying to think about like, this is gonna take forever if we have to keep going back and saying. You know, asking again.
Yeah, thanks. So it's, it's really an application to DOT, but I'm gonna let Rick pick up on the rest of that just to cover the. The rest of the questions. Because he's the one who fills them out. Pretty linear.
I've asked a few questions already, so that's why I'm. Asking you these questions, so. I think I can write it so. They'll say yes the first time around. I do wanna not bother having them out there in the winter. We don't think it's necessary. I mean, if we have this champagne stroll or something like that, fine, but. For the rest of the days during the winter, there's a lot of times when the state crews riding around with a plow on the truck, even if it's not snowing.
Right.
And those are.
Yeah.
In the way if there, if there's cars parked there, so.
Okay.
Yo.
Yeah, so I think all four crosswalks, we we're all in agreement on that, right?
Yes.
Historically, Rick, have they said no?
Well, we had a permit before, but the permit's only good for two years and.
Right.
So we probably went ten years without a permit.
A statute says it.
They do tell you what type of sign you have to have and all that too, so it's. The ones with the rubber base. With, I believe, the three foot tall sign on each side of it that flops over if somebody runs it over. That's what they want. There's no barrels. Per se in the street anymore.
So where are our old signs no good for what they want now? We'll have to.
No, they're, the last ones we're using are still the type that they want.
Okay, good.
And I did have some. Previously, I bought some parts for replacement, so. If I don't, I will assume I have at least three and right now I might have to buy one more for to get started.
Sounds good.
So I'm just putting, I'm just writing up a quick motion. So just gonna word Smith here for a second, motion to approve restarting the crosswalk pylon program, we'll call this, to place. Is that the correct terminology, Rick? Crosswalk pylons?
Why you say stop for pedestrian signs?
Stop for. To place. Signs at all four.
Right.
Now, we're going to be soon adding another crosswalk. So do we want to just have it read all crosswalks?
We'll have to apply for another permit when that one gets put in, because right now, until it's in place, we don't.
Okay, but if we put it in the. You don't have to come back to us.
Right.
When it's time.
This is not, both the ones at the traffic light though, because those are done on signals, so.
Right.
And they're, they're, they don't want any signs that close to the light either.
Right. So approving restarting the stop for pedestrian sign program to place sign programs at all crosswalks. In. Then we, you want us to set the parameters, Rick, for they go out Friday mornings and come in Monday mornings?
Well, if we get the permit, we're right, can probably help leave them out twenty-four seven, so. Except for winter. So it'll be out all week. You only want them on the weekends, that's. But during the summer, there's usually quite a bit of foot traffic during the week also. And leaf time.
So do you need any more information aside from restarting this program and. Placing signs in all the crosswalks?
No, I just wanted to make sure we're doing all four.
So I will make a motion to approve the restart of the stop for pedestrian sign program. To place signs at all crosswalks.
Second.
Thank you.
Are you gonna include a date? During the streetscape project?
Say that again, Joyce.
Are you gonna have the signs out during the streetscape project when there's trucks and things and?
When they're working in that area, we'll pick the sign up, but. The other ones can stay out. It's the same as when they come through and paint the lines or anything like that, we have to pick them up. Or they move them out of the way when they're painting the lines.
And I'm comfortable not putting a date in because it's, it is based on getting the encroachment permit. Once he gets the encroachment permit, he can put them out. We'll stick with that motion. Any more questions? Alrighty, all those in favor? Thanks, I saw you mouth it, I'm reading your lips, Rufus, you were on mute. We'll keep, keep moving on, so streetscape update. Uh, let's see, where am I? I have, here we go. Alrighty, this is hot off the presses today. From Mather, so starting August first, they will be. Doing the saw cutting at Bridge Street and then continuing the rest of the saw cuts. Till completed, they will also have traffic, Connecticut Traffic Control scheduled to be on site with the saw cutting operation. Mather will be mobilizing equipment and materials on those two days, August first and August second. So we'll be seeing equipment, you know, moving back and forth and materials. He says, I think by Wednesday, August third, we would be pulling out the existing walk, so that's starting on Bridge Street at the concrete bridge. And pulling out the existing walk in asphalt. And moving towards Route seven, the granite installer would start on Monday, August eighth, same location. So Mike, the project manager. Came to us and the way that they're gonna work it. In order to take advantage of the schools being out for the summer. And so that we have the least amount of disruption on Main Street. They're starting out at Bridge Street, they're gonna move in from Bridge Street, and then once they're done with that, they're gonna start all the way at the top of the project. At North Main Street, work their way down. I did send him back a quick email. This evening, cuz we literally got this at almost four thirty this afternoon, just to. Make sure, and he knows, cuz we've talked about it multiple times, that the, that weekend is the. The summer sale days for the village, so just that he needs to be acutely aware and sensitive to that. And we're, Rick and I are asking just for what the plan of action is for when they pull out. The asphalt sidewalk on the Morning Star side of the road right there on Bridge Street. Cuz there's no sidewalk on the other side, so how will, you know, if there are pedestrians and we know there's hikers that come to town. We wanna just make sure that whether it's cones, what their plan is for ensuring that pedestrians have safe passage through that piece. So that's where we stand right now. Pretty exciting. Eight point one five, so this was the new ad discussion regarding the town meeting process. For the School Resource Officer. Funding, and let me, I just wanna go to email from Darlene. And Darlene, you still on the call? Sorry, I got a lot of windows open here. Okay, so I just asked after the Board of Finance moved it to come back to the Board of Selectmen for, to go to a town meeting. And I just wanted to get from her process, and so. For the process, we're gonna, we need to get a motion drafted and approved by Randy. That would go to the town meeting and. So the, there could be a hearing and then. I believe two weeks later, there, with a town meeting. The town meeting, there could be just a town meeting with a, then adjourning to a ballot referendum. Which was Darlene's suggestion. So that. People can, you know, use their, you know, come to the ballot and vote, so. We need to, I need to get with Randy to come up with the wording, we're probably gonna have to have a special meeting to approve that, housekeeping wise. And then it gets warned to the community, and then we would either do. Hearing, town meeting, and a vote at the town meeting, and that could be either a hand vote or a secret ballot vote. Where you write it on a piece of paper if someone were to ask for that. Or we could do a town meeting and where it's really takes the place of a hearing. Town meeting that adjourns to a referendum, so those are sort of the two options that we need to decide on. And it's about roughly three thousand dollars. From just a quick look back to run a referendum, which is basically an in-person election, would be a twelve to eight. Similar to the, the Region One referendum, where you come you and you. Vote and there's election workers and the ROVs put that together and the, obviously internally as well.
We still need to present factual information to them.
That would be at the town meeting or the, the hearing slash town. That's when BOE and BOS would be doing that. So really, we need to decide and make a motion one way or the other. How we want to flow this. This decision to the public. Um, just not that it's a hiccup, but just something to keep in mind, August ninth, there is, obviously. The primaries, the Republican primary and the Democrat, Democratic primary that both take place here at Town Hall. So I think we just need to be aware of. That as far as timing, you know, giving the, the ROVs and the election team time to. You know, do you, how would you plan that? Do you do it?
I think.
The next day and it's all set up already? I, I, I don't know.
I think we've gotta go back to the BOE presentation to us because they want. They wanna know ASAP. So they can set things up, they can't wait. Because the. You know, from what Scott was talking about, it's, it's gonna take a process once the town. If the town, if the town approves this, then it will still take them. A number of weeks before a trooper would even be able to get in there.
Right, we, you know, we have also a duty to the town to make sure that we. Present this and give that, the people of the town time to come together. Have a discussion with the BOE, with the BOS, and to, you know, voice their opinion on the, the funding. So, and I, I know that, that Scott is aware of, you know. This process and understands that we have to go through the process that we have to go through. So if we were to get. Just looking at. The calendar. If we were to. So we can. Draft a motion. With Randy likely tomorrow, depending on, you know, if he's in the office, but let's say tomorrow. We come back, we do a special meeting, probably Wednesday. Which is the twenty-seventh. And then we would need to warn. We're, we're backing up to that August ninth date, just so we're all aware. So once we, so if we were to do a town meeting, that would act as the public hearing. Where both boards would come and present and have time for questions. The vote would be then to, if it's done at a referendum, it has to be no less than, but no more than fourteen days from the. Date of the adjourned town meeting. Just looking for the warning timeframe. Joyce, do you know what the warning timeframe is for a town meeting? Is it? So. So if we pass, we approve the motion on the twenty-seventh. In theory, we could have a town meeting. On Friday, August fifth. And have the referendum. Somewhere the week of the fifteenth. So we're not backing up too far into Labor Day. And to try to. You know, support the Board of Ed in their desire to get this moving. Expeditiously. So I guess the first question is. Process, do we want to? Do a. The hearing, town meeting, vote at the town meeting, or do we wanna do town meeting adjourned to a referendum? That's sort of the first piece I think that we should decide on. And Donna, I see your question, we're gonna stick to. The topic of getting this. Scheduled. And keep your questions, we'll, we'll get the questions. At the time of the hearing, just so that we can, you know, it's after nine, we still have. A fair amount to go, so I'd like to just stay focused on the scheduling piece. So again, going back with calendars out. As long as we can get the motion. Back and forth with Randy, we'll schedule for the twenty-seven. Joyce, are, is there any conflict in here? Just as we're walking through this, making sure that. I'm not missing anything.
You can meet those deadlines now.
What time on the twenty-seventh?
They're usually at seven, right, Joyce?
Seven at night?
Yeah, the town meeting, yep.
For, for which day?
August fifth, Friday, August fifth. And then that kind of gives that next week clear. Cleared for. The primary. And if we do a referendum, then a referendum would need to be done no less than seven days. So we're looking at. The week of the fifteenth through the nineteenth, Monday through Friday, to get it scheduled. That's for the town meeting referendum option.
And it also be seven o'clock?
No, the referendum, referendum, right, noon to eight. Would be open from noon to eight. I'm not, I'm not trying to drive the conversation one way or another.
That's, yep, I see, I see.
And then hearing on the hearing option, we could still do a hearing on. Friday, the fifth. And Joyce, we could do the, a town meeting on Friday, the nineteenth, correct? Cuz it has to be worn five days. And again, I'm trying to stay away from that August ninth. And it, this would be in person.
It's a lot less expensive going to a town meeting.
Saving that three thousand dollars. Give or take.
That's, I would lean more toward that.
So there's a. Comment in the chat to make it hybrid, we don't have the technology to make it hybrid right now. You'd have to be all Zoom or all in person and. The amount of. Work and the, just the amount of. Challenges that. We have to deal with and. Double check and triple check for doing these Zoom town meetings is, is a ton of work. I know that people are on vacation, but it's just, it, it is so much, so much work for the people who are working. Behind the scenes, it's multiple, you give it, it's, it's a lot, a, a lot, a lot. And. The, just the, there's constant challenges that we. People don't see when you're on the Zoom meetings, on those big, you know, town meetings, but there's. Just constant. Stuff that we're troubleshooting during the entire thing, and that's in addition to running the meeting, the ROVs, making sure everybody's. Everybody coming into the meeting is vetted. We're opening, I think, the last one. Did we open the meeting an hour and a half? No, we opened it an hour before. And we went, you know, it was an hour and fifteen minutes to get everybody vetted through. With the same instructions that we've been sending out for two years and the same, please come in early, please come in early. You know, you have huge turnouts, there's only so many people that you can process in. So much time. And then people are waiting, you know, in that Zoom meeting for an hour, an hour and a half for the meeting to start, it's, it's a lot. And I was the one who pushed for them for the last two years to keep everybody safe, but it's. And we have a new, you know, one new ROV coming in. It's, it would be a lot. It's, it would be a lot. Um, I would need to check with Darlene on the absentee ballot. It's a good question, Andrew. So, um, either way. We have to. Um, approve a motion, which is gonna take tomorrow. Hopefully we'll only take tomorrow, so why don't we go ahead and schedule a special meeting for Wednesday, the twenty seventh? To approve the motion. And, um, we'll revisit the, the process and make the decision on Wednesday. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so.
And I, I am sensitive to that we've been, you know, we're going at three hours on this, so people's brains are.
It doesn't make sense because I have to have the agenda ready at that meeting. On the twenty seven to put it in the paper on the twenty ninth, so if you're gonna discuss the process, I won't have an agenda ready. I need to know whether it's an agenda for a hearing or an agenda for a town meeting.
I think we should go with a town meeting. Unless you wanna do the hearing on the fifth. And then the town meeting on the nineteenth. Is that what you were saying?
Well, I think really the two options are town meeting to a referendum ballot vote. Or hearing to town meeting.
Right, person, I, I think the hearing to a town meeting. Is. You know, we've, we, we can't just throw money three thousand here and three thousand there, so I think. We need to do that.
So why don't, why don't we start with the motion for that, Rufus, if you can make that motion?
So I would make a motion that we follow the process of. Holding a hearing on August fifth. At seven PM. That will. Process to adjourn to a town meeting on August nineteenth. At seven PM.
I'll second that. So.
So I'm sorry, sa- say that one more time again, if you would.
His motion was for a hearing on the fifth. Adjourning to a town meeting on the nineteenth. Any other? Questions or clarifications, Joyce, that timing would be. Correct, right?
Timing works, but I just wanna remind you that you did ask Darlene for her opinion and, and.
Yep.
Her suggestion was the opposite, so I don't know.
Which I did say. The beginning.
I, I, I just wanna reiterate that, that. Due to the sensitivity of the topic, she strongly felt that a referendum was a better option.
So Darlene wrote, my suggestion based on the sensitivity of the subject is to. Schedule a town meeting that will be adjourned to a referendum vote approved by the BOS. The town meeting will act as the public hearing, presentation by the BOE, BOS, and time for questions and answer. Vote is taken then at a refer- at referendum date set no less than, no more than, no less than seven, no more than fourteen days from the day of the. Adjourned town meeting. Twelve to eight.
I'm leaning towards a referendum.
And Rufus, I'm in complete agreement with you on um. The. Three thousand dollars. Um, I am. Well, let's vote. All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. We have an eye with Rufus, I'm opposed. So the motion fails. So, um, I'll make a motion that we. Schedule a town meeting. So it's no less than seven, um, schedule a town meeting for Friday, August fifth. Adjourning to. I'm gonna, sorry, I take that all back. Let's have a discussion. So if we do a town meeting on the fifth, on August fifth. Then it's no less than, no more than fourteen days, so no less than uh, seven, sorry, is.
Twelve, you could do it the following Friday.
Um, usually I believe they're on. Customarily, they have them on Tuesdays. Um, and. It may, you know, may do well to follow the custom, people expect to, they will have been voting on. Tuesday, August ninth. Um, it'll be fresh in their heads voting on a Tuesday, and we could vote on. Um, Tuesday, the sixteenth. Joyce, is it business days or calendar days? Okay, so that would work. And that would be the referendum open from twelve to eight on the sixteenth.
I don't think Tuesdays are what people, you know. That, it's a different kind of world today.
Well, we, I mean. Your idea of doing it on a Friday does, you know, if there are people who are um. Are timers or weekenders are coming back from. Or heading out to a weekend away. They're heading out to a weekend away, they could come, you know, right before they go.
Or maybe they're coming back from a week of work somewhere else and.
Yeah. Have we ever done a referendum on a Friday for those long timers in town? Joyce, Donna?
We have not. I think Tuesday has to do with the um, registrar of voters and how they budget their hours and stuff now too.
Should decide, I'm, I would lean towards Tuesday just because it's customary, that's what people are. Generally accustomed to for the region one, for the primary, for the munis, for the. All the elections are on Tuesdays.
I'll, I'll agree with that.
Yeah, and we, so this is dependent on um, absentees. We do have to get that from Darlene. So we can do the town meeting on Friday, the fifth. Adjourning to a bo- a referendum on the sixteenth. Is that what we're? Looking at?
Yes.
Okay, so. And Joyce, that's enough time. For the warning, if we do the special meeting on the twenty seventh.
Yes.
Any other pinch points? So, um, I will make that motion to. Hold a town meeting on Friday, August fifth. At seven PM. Adjourning to a referendum on Tuesday, August sixteenth. From twelve to eight, from twelve noon to eight PM.
Second.
Thank you. And again, we have to get that information on the absentees, but um, short that. Um, we will try your minds, all those in favor?
I, I.
Thank you. Appreciate the. Discussion of the process. Alrighty. We are. At eight point one six, notification. Of exempt modification application to the Connecticut Siting Council for modifications to an existing tower on Bulls Bridge Road. So we received um, notification from um. Verizon that they are requesting to file an exempt modification. For the existing tower on Bulls Bridge Road. Their plan is to, um, I'll just read you the paragraph. Verizon Wireless currently maintains twelve antennas at the hundred and sixty foot level of the existing hundred and eighty foot tower. The property is owned by South Ken School Corporation and the tower is owned by Crown Castle. Verizon now intends to replace six and add three antennas. The new antennas would be installed at the one hundred and sixty foot level of the tower, its modification includes all the proper. Hardware that is both four G and five G capable and ten amount modifications will be completed as per the attached mount analysis. Um, so this is really a, so. An exempt modification is there, um, they apply to the Siting Council, the town gets notified. And um, it, it basically gets approved, so and. All this is, is basically maintenance on the antennas, there, they probably have some old antennas that need to be replaced. Obviously, they're upgrading some of them, um, so I just wanted to make sure that the board um, had visibility on this. But it's a very housekeeping um, process that they have to go through with the Siting Council.
Thanks for the info.
Sure. Right, super exciting for nine fifteen, nine twenty-three at night, um. So we'll try to. Rock and roll through the rest of this, subcommittee reports, ARPA needs assessment committee, um. The committees wrapped up their work, um. Is Connie still with us? Yes, I see her, I love that picture with the fish, um. Are we, are, are you ready for the board to thank and disband this committee, um? What are your, what's your temp on this?
She's fishing.
She's fishing. No report, but we would like to stay convened. Well done, fantastic, thank you. Moving right along, affordable housing plan, um, our next meeting is the twenty seventh, so, um. And we have to plan our um. That special board meeting, but we can do that, Joyce can send out a, a quick um, tickler to everybody. So the next steering committee meeting is the twenty seventh and we'll be reviewing the draft plan that our consultant has. Um, put together based on the feedback and the data that was collected, broadband working group, this is sort of the. The follow-up to the EV chargers, um, this landscape has been really shifting a lot with money that's coming down, um. Sort of the reality of doing a, providing um, broadband for all. Town by town by a hundred and sixty-nine towns, um, especially the teeny tiny ones. So the cog, we recently, um. There's sort of been a, a reconnoitering that it makes more sense. And we'll get better bang for our buck, we'll get more um, grant dollars, if we take a regional approach, it will als- it also makes sense. Um, so the cog had a meeting last month as an in- an initial conversation, we have another one coming up. Um, I was on a broadband meeting this morning that talked about a statewide approach, so there. Um, deep is actually, has actually put out a request for information from the public, which we'll send out, um. For information about um, broadband and that sort of goes with that CCM. Survey that deep is going to use that data to help them drive um, this funding. And it's, it's a lot of money, um, so we're continuing to meet with the cog, um. There, the sort of next level is they wanna see the towns that are interested, I'm. Pretty sure that every town is gonna be interested in taking this regional approach, it just makes all the sense in the world, so that's. Sort of where we are with that. Um, and we already did nine for one. Um, ambulance subcommittee, um, have, they have not met this month, so I don't have anything to report on that. Glenn, you're up, Main Street noise and traffic.
Uh, not much to say, other than, um, you know, we're moving forward on that first report that, um, that they gave us, uh, you know, all, all the pedestrian pylons. That, you know, that, that's been really good, um, and of course, all the DOT, thank you for all your emails, uh, Gene. Uh, and all that, um, and, um, and then this, um, this, this second state trooper, this referendum. I mean, this all dovetails with what we've been talking about recently, uh, which is about enforcement. Um, so, um, we meet again, I think a week from today, and, um, you know, so we'll be talking about everything we spoke about tonight.
Great. And, um, do you wanna? Take us round to home plate with the Swift Force, Swift House, oh, Task Force.
Say it ten times fast, uh, but, uh, yeah, uh, Gene, thank you for being on, uh, the meeting the other day, uh, uh, Gene helped us out with, uh. With a lot of the survey, some of the survey questions and, and just how the survey should, should go, um, the survey monkey, uh, is certainly not my expertise. But, uh, but it's Gene's, so, uh.
Keeps my skills honed.
So, uh, so no, we're, uh, we're, we're getting that going, uh, certainly with Gene's help and, uh, we'll get that out to, to the public, uh, uh, very soon. And, uh, it'll, it'll, uh, you know, we'll get their input about, about the Swift House. Um, and, um, and then also, uh, all of the ADA issues which we talked about tonight, uh, whi- which are good, so, uh, so thank you, uh, we're moving forward on that. Um, just to see, you know, what we need to do and, um, uh, moving forward, uh, so, um, so, you know, uh, it's, um. You know, we'll, we'll meet again, uh, we, we, the, 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 the committee has talked about maybe extending the time, I mean, I know when we. Made a charge for this, uh, committee, I think I said about six months. We're not quite sure if we're gonna get a report done by August, I think is the six month, August to September. But, um, but the, the committee has talked about maybe, maybe meeting for slightly longer than that, um, once a month, so, um. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Great. Selectmen's reports, I have nothing left.
No. Nine thirty, got nothing left?
Just shy of nine thirty, Rufus, Glenn, anything under selectmen's reports?
I got nothing.
Alrighty, this was a long one, but I feel like it was. A really productive one, and I appreciate everybody's patience with letting us focus on getting our work done. Um, very much so, it, according to Apple, it is nine twenty-eight and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
I.